Is an active participant at her church and enjoys a mem- and enjoys being a member of the Stars Program, which focuses on building character in young girls and provides opportunities for her to do community service. She enjoys singing and dancing and is currently preparing to participate in a Christmas play. She plays tennis and loves doing crafts and mentioned that she likes making things, likes room de- like room decor and making items out of cardboard. When I was asked what she loves the most about school, she replied, "I love this school. They are really nice teachers and I like the education that school gives me." I was on the All-A Honor Roll for her first quarter in third grade. Her favorite classes are art and science. She decided that she wanted to be an OBGYN after her sister was born when she was four and has already identified a local mentor to help achieve her goal. Please join Ila in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good luck on your future goals and we have to hear about it along the way. We move now to our recognition and awards as Seniors of the Month. I have the honor of introducing to you the Senior of the Month from Bruton High School, and that is Kevin Mahoney. Kevin is with Mom and Dad, Mr. and Mrs. Mahoney, and Brother Joseph, if you will all stand. Let me share some information with you about Kevin. Bruton High School is proud to celebrate the accomplishments of Kevin Mahoney. Kevin is an active, is an extremely outgoing, friendly, and self-motivated student who seeks opportunities to connect with students and build relationships with his peers both at Bruton and in the community. During the past two years, Kevin has served as Panther Achievement Leader, a mentor to freshman students. This work has enabled, enabled Kevin to support other students in our school community. Kevin is an excellent scholar and has received the highest honors awards every year since the ninth grade and has maintained a 4.22 grade point average. He is a member of the National Honor Society and Mu Alpha Theta. Kevin is a hard-working student who is currently pursuing an EMT certification at New Horizons. He is an athlete who always gives 100% in talent and leadership to his team. Kevin has participated in football in indoor and outdoor track and has received the Tri-Athlete Award every year. Kevin was named All-State in the 4x4, 4x2, and 500 Relays. When Kevin is not participating in the club or activity at Bruton, he is volunteering as a youth group leader at St. Bede. He enjoys this opportunity to impact the lives of others. Kevin plans to attend college and we look forward to his continued success. Please join me in congratulating Kevin Mahoney as the December Senior of the Month. And the next will be, um, Mr. Richardson, Grafton?
Yes, I have the honor of presenting Samuel Genusik as the Senior of the Month. If he could stand up, he's here with his mom and dad, John and Lori, and his brothers, Daniel and John. I actually know this family, they used to live next door to me, so, know them real well, so it's an honor for me to be able to read this. We're pleased to recognize Samuel Genusik of Grafton High School's December Senior of the Month. Samuel has dedicated himself to academics, sports, clubs, activities, and his community. Samuel is ranked the top of his class and is part of the York County Honors Program. Samuel has played for Grafton Soccer Team all four years. He has been a member of the Model United Nations for three years and is also a member of the Robotics Club and was recently inducted into the Science National Honor Society. Samuel served as treasurer to his junior class and for the orchestra for which he has been a member for the past, last two years. Samuel was named as one of Virginia's Aerospace Science and Technology Scholars last summer. During this time, Samuel spent a week at NASA designing a mission to Mars. Samuel shares his passion for aeronautics and engineering by volunteering at the Virginia Air and Space Museum on Saturdays during their STEM Saturdays. Samuel was recently accepted into Virginia Tech where he will pursue a degree in engineering with a focus in environmental engineering. Samuel enjoys spending time outdoors, hiking, camping, and surfing. He recently completed his first sprint triathlon and placed fourth in his age group. Samuel's character and dedication to his academics make him an exemplary student who we are proud to call a Grafton Clipper. Congratulations, Samuel.
Dr. George, you have Tab High?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Haywood. Malia is not able to be with us this evening, but I'm going to go ahead and read, read a little bit about her. When you think of adaptability, our December Student of the Month is the definition of the word. From her entry into Tab High her sophomore year, Malia has taken our school and media program to new heights. With a 3.75 GPA, taking weighted and AP courses, and on the highest honor roll at Tab for the past two years, Malia could single-handedly run the newspaper program. She was chosen last year to represent Tab High at Stanford University to present the Roving Reporters Program she developed at Tab, while also being selected as one of the 10 Most Valuable Student Journalists at Stanford. She currently is the President of Tiger TV, our monthly live TV program, and is the current Editor-in-Chief of our Tiger Times Newspaper, winning the VHSL Media Champion Award. Her volunteer time in just these two activities number hundreds of hours per year. She has also been instrumental in starting our online newspaper. She is a member of three National Honor Societies to include Quill and Scroll, English Honor Society, and National. In her downtime, she manages the women's soccer team, volunteers at the Peninsula SPCA Weekly, teaches film production to other students in the Film Club, and is currently a top-four finalist in the Cox Media Distracted Driving Video Competition, parentheses, hopefully champions by the time I read this. She desires to study film production at UCLA in the fall, and I see Malia being a tremendous asset to the movie industry, just as she has been to Tab High School. And as an update, sure enough, three Tab High School students received their official prize today in the Cox Communications Hall Automotive No-Two Distracted Driving Video Contest. This is the fifth year of the program in which students create original videos demonstrating the dangers of driving distracted, and the second time that a YCSD student, YCSD student has won the grand prize, Bruton High won in 2015. As the grand prize winners, students split a $3,500 prize with another $3,500 being donated to the school. Congratulations to Malia Ro- Malia Rosenberg, Hope Matthews, and Elizabeth Rodriguez. And I think next month she will be with us and perhaps we'll be able to queue up the YouTube and, and show that video. So, congratulations and your attendance is honored.
And Mr. Matford, you have York High?
Yes, I'll try to get through without coughing. Matthew Nettleton from York High School, and I think your mom's with you and your grandparents, if they can stand too, and anybody else that's with you, please have them stand. It's a pleasure to read about Matthew being the Senior of the Month for York High School for December. York High School is pleased to announce that Matthew is the December Senior of the Month. Matthew is a very serious, is very serious about his education and has worked diligently to maintain a competitive grade point average. As a student in the International Baccalaureate Program, Matthew has been inducted into a number of honor societies to include Mu Alpha Theta, the Spanish National Honor Society, the Science National Honor Society, and Tri-M Music Honor Society. Matthew is no stranger to leadership positions. He currently serves as Vice President for three of the four honor societies, and he is the Secretary of the Green Team and President of all York High School choirs. He is also a member of the Catalyst Club and is the historian for the Future Business Leaders of America Club. Matthew is a very busy young man. He assists with musical productions and volunteers a great deal of his summer at the Hampton History Museum. When he does have some free time, if you find any, Matthew enjoys singing, debating, reading, and learning more about history and law. Matthew is a productive member of York High Community and is a positive role model amongst his peers. Congratulations, Matthew. We are very proud of you and all that you accomplished at York High School as a Falcon. Congratulations.
As Dr. Shandor is moving down front, we are moving to our Student Service Awards. The first, Mr. Anderson, you're presenting to Yorktown Elementary.
Yorktown Elementary School is proud to recognize Diamond Williams as the Student Service Award winner for December. Diamond is a fifth-grade student who is always willing to help others at home, school, and in the community. Her recognition for this award is not based on one act of kindness, but because of her consistent efforts to help others. Diamond's mother used the words helpful, caring, and outgoing to describe her, sharing that she often assists with cooking, cleaning, and helping her brother with his homework. Can you come and help my son? In Diamond's words, her favorite subject is math because it's easy for her and there are different ways to do things. Diamond was previously a cheerleader for the Yorktown Patriots and she hopes to return to the team in the future. She shared that she enjoys doing creative stuff with her mom. When she grows up, Diamond would like to be a chef because it's fun to cook, or a lawyer because she likes helping people. Diamond stated that she recently led a food drive at the Boys and Girls Club so that she could help people who don't have food for Thanksgiving. She made posters, collected the cans, and helped prepare them for delivery to a local church. She also helped make posters and collect candy for the Fall Festival. At the Boys and Girls Club, she likes to help younger children with their homework and helps the cook feed the children. Diamond looks for opportunities to help others and it is a natural part of what she does every day. According to her teacher, Diamond is always helpful, hardworking, and is kind. She's a strong example of the character traits exemplified by a soaring falcon. Congratulations.
And the next Student Service Award is York High School, Mr. Matford?
It is York High School again. Maya Patel, if you can come up, please. Maya, Maya? Alrighty, and your principal, Dr. Butler? Is it Maya or Maya?
Maya.
Maya, I just want to make sure. York High School is pleased to announce Maya as our Student Service Award recipient. Maya is a kind person who makes a positive and lasting difference. She is dependable, dedicated, and passionate about serving others. Maya is a member of the Youth Volunteer Corps of Hampton Roads where she has spent the past seven years working with the elderly, the homeless, disabled veterans, and individuals with special needs. She has also volunteered at the Tough Enough 5K. Due to Maya's work ethic and integrity, she was nominated to serve on the YVCHR Youth Advisory Board. She also has the privilege of serving on the International Advisory Board. This is a distinct honor as she was selected from over 10,000 other youth volunteers. Maya has been a member of the YMCA Leaders Club where she has volunteered over 400 hours throughout high school. She is a member of, of that club. As a member of the club, Maya helps to set up events for the local YMCA and recently attended a Leaders Club rally where she completed leadership classes and team bonding excursions with other members of the club. Maya's passion and dedication to serving the community is impressive and inspiring. Way to go, Maya. We are proud of you and being part of our thousand families. And one last thing, keep making that difference, doing a good job. Congratulations.
Thank you. We now move to our recognition of our volunteers for the month. Dr. George, you have Yorktown Elementary?
I do, thank you. I'd like to introduce the Volunteer of the Month from Yorktown Elementary School, Jaleen And Kelly Denny, thank you. First of all, is the pronunciation okay? Perfect. Yorktown Elementary School is pleased to recognize Mrs. Jaleen Lemuel as the Volunteer of the Month for December. Last year, when the Lemuel family moved to New- to Yorktown, Mrs. Lemuel jumped right in to see how she could help. She became involved in programs through the PTA and in the classroom. With the support of another parent, she began a program to help military families make connections and sponsor two events that were highly attended and well-received. In addition to being a highly-involved YES parent, Mrs. Lemuel works in the Recreation Center and is the Ombudsman for the Naval Weapons Station. This year, Mrs. Lemuel serves as the PTA President and has worked with her board and parent volunteers to honor the traditions of YES while improving programs. Her biggest goal for the PTA is to bring together the school community and create a family feel where students and parents feel welcomed and connected. Mrs. Lemuel is always focused on reaching and including as many families as possible, and she is to be commended for increasing participation in family events this year. She attributes, attributes this to the strong collaboration of her board, her PTA board, and their ability to work well together. When Mrs. Lemuel volunteers, she brings the whole family. This year, she drafted her husband to serve as the box tops, box tops chairperson, and her children are always at events helping to set up, run, and break down activities. She and her family stuffed almost 700 back-to-school packets in one afternoon for Yorktown Elementary School. Her positive attitude and calm approach make her a natural leader, and we are very fortunate to have Mrs. Lemuel leading the way for parents in the Yorktown Elementary community. Thank you for all that you do and congratulations.
And Mr. Richardson, you have York High?
I do, thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce Angie Zabecky, if she could come up with the principal, All of our volunteers do a tremendous job and we really want to thank them for everything they do. But York High School is proud to recognize Angie Zabecky as the Volunteer of the Month. Angie has been a steady presence at York High School since 2009, having two daughters graduated and a son graduating this spring. This recognition is special because we're not just recognizing her work this year, but her abundance of work over the past eight years. Angie has been a vital contributor to the PTSA as the Hospitality Chair, and in this position, she has led volunteers in creating amazing monthly activities, themed lunches, and special treats for the entire staff. Her creativity and hard work is well-known, appreciated, and admired by so many. She spends countless hours planning and arranging events so that the staff at York High School always feel appreciated. She does, does this all with an amazing smile and genuine personality that makes you always grateful for her presence. As a member of the PTSA here in York and other schools, she has dedicated countless hours to the York County School Division and supported numerous PTSA events. Beginning this school year, Angie began a new support role as a parent to a kindergarten teacher and field hockey coach. In her new role as this mom to a teacher slash coach, Angie is now supporting Yorktown Elementary and York High School students even more. As her three oldest children have excelled as students and athletes at York High School, Angie has excelled in her role as a supportive parent and volunteer. Her commitment to York High School and its students and the community is truly invaluable.
The York Foundation for Public Education would like to make a special presentation to Ailis Shamblin, a third grader from Yorktown Elementary, for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. She will come forward. We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients, Diamond Williams from Yorktown Elementary and Maya from York High School. Also, our four Seniors of the Month, Kevin Mahoney from Bruton, Samuel from Grafton, we know that, Malia from Tab will receive hers later, and Matthew from York High. If you will all come up for a group picture. A special gift from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented tonight on behalf of the York Foundation in partnership with Jeannie Fayoka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being presented on behalf of a foundation supporter. And presenting the gift tonight is Mrs. Christina Head, York Foundation for Public Education member. Please join me in congratulating all of these folks. We have two more presentations before we take a break. And as Dr. Shandor is remaining in front, I would like Mr. Bill Bowen's Chief Financial Officer, Mrs. Cassandra Dillett Payroll Supervisor, and Mrs. Karen Wood Budget and Financial Supervisor to come forward. Is Mrs. Margaret Kirk? Or is it just the three? Yeah, Mrs. Margaret Kirk, the Accounting Supervisor. I got it mixed up because there are four people, but three awards. I want everybody to have an award. The first award for the F- for the Fiscal Year 2018 Budget Award. The York County School Division's Financial Year 2018 Budget was awarded the Matur- Maturious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International. This is the 20th consecutive year that the School Division has earned this award. This award represents the highest form of recognition in governmental and school district budgeting. To receive the award, to receive the Budget Award, the budget must meet nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation, be technically be well-prepared, and be easy to understand. The Budget Award Program is designed to encourage exemplary budgeting practices. That's one award. Now, there are two awards for Fiscal Year 2016. Comprehensive Annual Financial Report Awards are the CAFR. The York County School Division's Fiscal Year 2016 was awarded the Certificate of Excellence in the Financial Reporting Award from the Association of School Business Officials International, and the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Award from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. To meet the standards for the CAFR Award, the CAFR must be efficiently organized and satisfy generally accepted accounting principles and applicable legal requirements. The CAFR awards are the highest form of recognition awarded in the field of governmental financial reporting. This is the 19th consecutive year that the School Division has earned the CAFR awards. Please join me in congratulating, congratulating these four individuals for the hard work that they do and the recognition that they bring to the School Division. And we move now to Accent on Academics, and I know, Dr. Shandor, you're going to do the introductions here.
I am, thank you, Ms. Haywood. For this evening's Accent on Academics, McGruder Elementary School will present Girls Coding Club. The McGruder Elementary School's Girl Coding Club is an after-school club that enables students to explore coding through hands-on investigation. Students learn to see themselves as computer scientists by engaging in problem-solving activities. Mr. Mark Kirk, McGruder Elementary Principal, will now introduce tonight's presenters. Mr. Kirk?
Good evening, School Board Chair, Mrs. Haywood, members of the School Board, Dr. Shandor, and other members of the YCSD community. Thank you for this opportunity to share about the After-School Coding Club at McGruder Elementary School. I have very excited girls behind me who are ready to present to you this evening, and at this time, I'd like to introduce the members of the club. First, next to me is Denise Fisher, Educational Technology Facilitator and Club Sponsor. Next are student members, if they'll step forward. Lizzie, who was sick this evening. Zenaya, Savannah, Unique, Anivia, Ava, Izzy, Ruby, Amanda, and we have one returning student this evening who is now currently a Queens Lake Middle School student, and that is Savannah, our second Savannah. The Girls Coding Club is making a significant impact at McGruder and addressing key aspects of the YCSD strategic plan. It is providing MES students with meaningful school connections through involvement with STEM activities and also rigorous learning opportunities. I'll now turn it over to Mrs. Fisher, who will come forward to share more details.
Hello, I'm Denise Fisher, and it's a pleasure to have the opportunity to share about the Girls Who Code Club this evening. Research shows a lack of females in STEM-related fields. This is often due to a lack of exposure at an early age. Two years ago, I started the Girls Who Code Club to provide our students with experiences that will ignite the passion in STEM technology, engineering, and math. Each year, I've been able to add more technology to this program. Recently, I received a generous grant from Spectrum Communications through the York County Foundation of Education, Public Education, sorry, that will enable us to purchase Raspberry Pis, which are little handheld computers, to further their learning and, physical computing is what it's called, through fun and practical projects. While I could talk about this forever, I feel that our students can do a much better job, so I'm going to step back and let them share.
Hello, my name is Zenaya. I would like to tell you about the Coding Club. Mrs. Fisher likes for us to experiment and learn from each other. We start out by block coding. That means we block, the blocks already have code in them, but we put them together to create something. Using block coding, we animated our names and created simple stories or scenes using scratch.edu. We used apps on the iPads to make robots ta- change colors, move around, and make noise while trying not to run them into the wall. BB-8's head always pops off when that happens. In the la- in the last couple of weeks of the club, Mrs. Fisher lets us choose which programs we want to use. The robots are fun, but we usually choose Scratch or code.org on the computer because we can do it in the class when we have extra time, and we do it every chance we get. We can even access it at home.
Hello, my name is Amanda. I was in the fourth grade Coding Club last year and this year as a fifth grader. I wanted to be in the club again because I love getting to spend time working with the team, creating something, or solving a problem. When you code the impossible, it's possible. If you can dream it, you can create it. I like spreading the excitement about coding and getting others to see the benefits of coding, especially how it helps with learning new skills in school. Coding has really helped me in everything I've done.
Hello, my name is Savannah. Coding teaches us important lessons, the biggest one being, learning through failure and mistakes during our club experiences. We constantly use our problem-solving and teamwork skills to overcome programming problems. We have learned that even though we may not always We have learned that even though we may not always find immediate success, it's the process that's so much fun. I loved being in the Coding Club. Now, we would like to show you our robots.
Last year, I was a member of the Girls Who Code Club in the fall. In the spring, I helped with the fourth and fifth grade coders' after-school club. The Girls Who Code Club did a lot for me. It helped me realize how fun coding can be, as each line of code goes together to make a website that looks professionally made or just a cool video in Scratch. In October, I attended the Capital One Coders Experience for middle school girls at the Southern Virginia Higher Education Center in Boston, in South Boston, Virginia. We were randomly assigned to teams of three as we arrived and registered. We were taught basic problem-solving, teamwork, and software development skills. Afterward, we used software by MIT to write our own mobile app. My team designed a choose-your-own-adventure app where users can choose one character and then proceed through a story by choosing what the character should do next. My team was one of the winners. Coding has helped me do many things, like move a little BB-8 around the hall as he tries to go through walls, creating animations, and even signing up for the Capital One Coders Experience. Woo, coding!
We want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to share just a little bit about our club. We think the girls are doing wonderful work, and at this time, if you have any questions, I think the girls are ready to answer and ready to talk.
Yes, I have a quick question. So, do you strictly do block coding, or have you learned certain languages that you code with?
He asked if we was just doing block coding, so if you've learned anything other regular coding.
Well, we have been doing some other things, like building houses in Minecraft, using coding blocks, or controlling chickens or something like that in Minecraft.
One thing, you're having too much fun. You really are.
I know that as we travel around to our educational conferences and such, that coding is, I mean, it's so important, I think, and they're teaching it younger and younger to folks as they enter school now. I mean, some districts are introducing it in kindergarten, first grade. So what y'all are doing is this leading edge of something that's going to create career paths and, you know, jobs and where you may find yourself in life one day, making a lot of money most likely, but having fun doing it. And so hats off to you, and especially the young lady from Queens Lake now, where you found an opportunity to take that information you've learned locally and go compete. And then, who knows, that could open up a competition nationally somewhere for you one day. So hats off to all of you. I think we're going to see a whole lot more with this coding. I hope you share what you're doing with your club with other schools in our districts so maybe they can do some of the same things. So, thank you. And I'd just like to reiterate that, what a great program. Keep up the great work. This is wonderful. Thank you. Good job.
Can I ask one quick question to Savannah before she goes to Queens Lake? Besides the experience that you had at the conference, are you able to do any more coding at Queens Lake? Anything else in the school that allows you to expand on that?
There's the STEM club for after-school for sixth through eighth grade. I didn't sign up for it, though.
Okay. Just curious, because it's a fantastic opportunity. Would like to see it feed through.
My question would be more expanded to say, do we have course offerings in coding, and where are they placed in our K-12 world or so?
That's something to look at, but thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
The board's going to take a break and come down and meet you, so we'll take a few-minute break. Do we have any unfinished business?
No, ma'am. I have mine.
And moving to presentations, construction report.
Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Board members, I'm going to call Mr. Mark Sheehart, Associate Director for Capital Plans and Projects, to present this month's construction report. Mr. Sheehart.
I like the tie.
Ms. Haywood, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, here's your capital projects report for the month of December. You tripped me up there.
Yeah, I did it on purpose.
So briefly, I want to talk a little bit about Yorktown Elementary School and Bethel Manor Elementary School additions and renovations that went on this summer there. We are, the contractors are still wrapping up some final HVAC things, tweaking pumps and things like that, and they have to finish the commissioning of the HVAC systems. It's all running, it's up to speed, they're just doing the fine tuning on the systems. One of the things they are still waiting on is doors. For some reason, they've ordered doors months and months ago, and the doors still have not come in. They expected them weeks ago, still no doors. So hopefully, at both schools, they hope to have the doors for both schools and install them during the break while all the students are gone and wrap up those buildings. The next project is Grafton School, and that's the roof replacement there. We received a proposal back from the contractor for the additional work, which is above the middle school band storage room there. I talked about the water running down inside the wall and getting into the storage room. They're going to remove that brick there, put in some through-wall flashing there, and then reinsert the brick. The only thing, only hang up right now for them doing this work during the winter break is finding the exact color of brick. They've got some leads, but we just don't have the brick, they don't have the brick in hand quite yet. The next project is the TAB Elementary School. This is HVAC and partial roof replacement there. The construction documents for this were completed today, and Greg Dolak has been working with a contractor and making preparations to get the classroom number seven ready for a temporary office. That will be moved, offices will be moved on March 2nd, which is a half-day after the students leave, will move the main office over to the temporary office location. The Assistant County Attorney is reviewing the solicitation now, before that goes out for bids. The first phase of this project will start in the spring and go through the summer of 2018, and it includes heating and air conditioning replacement, creating the security vestibule, some restroom renovations, new ceilings, painting, and potentially replacing all the lighting with LED lights. The second phase, which will happen in the following summer of 2019, includes roof and window replacement, some work in the cafeteria and gymnasium areas, and possible casework and door replacements. When I say potential and possible, what I'm saying there is we don't know where the bids are going to come in at. If the bids are low enough, then we can go ahead and include more of this work in the project and get it all done at the same time. Here's a view of the school from Google Earth. You see on the right-hand side of the picture, you see Big Bethel Road, and you can see the current main entrance there, the front of the building facing Big Bethel Road. That's where the main entrance is now. You can see up the top of the picture, you see the oval area there, which is the bus parking lot, and you can see where the temporary main entrance will be located after March 2nd. And the main office and the temporary entrance will be there through the end of the school year. Then the offices, the staff will be moved to probably Bethel Manor Elementary School and vacate the school during the rest of the summer for 2018. Here's a drawing of the school. You can see here where the current main entrance is. And again, at the top of the picture there, just about in the middle is Room 7, Classroom 7, which will be the temporary main office. Here's another view of that. You can see here where it's identified, the temporary main office there and the temporary main entrance. There's a set of double doors that's existing there, and a little bit further down the hallway, we'll put another set of doors. They'll have a temporary security vestibule there for the rest of the school year after March 2nd. You can see in the front of the school here, on the right-hand side of the picture, right-hand side of the drawing, you can see the redesigned canopy there. And then the oval there, where the renovated main office area is, will be the area that the contractor will be working from spring break throughout, through the rest of the school year. He'll be doing demolition and building in that area. The next project is the new elementary school, and we have that contract signed. The Assistant County Attorney is in the process of reviewing those contract documents, and once she's completely satisfied with them, she'll sign off on that, and we can get going on the design for this building. The design for this is only, the only thing that has been approved right now is the schematic design phase, which is the very first phase of the project. It is not the design for the whole entire building, so that's the only part that's been authorized at this point in time. The school construction timeline has not been determined yet. We're still waiting for residential construction in that area to pick up, and once it picks up, we have a better idea when we need to occupy that building. And the last projects I'd like to touch on are Grafton Complex HVAC Systems Replacement and Main Offices Reorientation, so that the school offices face the main entrance, which is a request or proposal 2072. We put this out for proposals last Friday, and we are going through the building this Wednesday after the students leave with the architects and engineers, just to walk through and see what needs to happen in the building. The second request proposal that's out on the street right now is for breezeway enclosures, gym floors, and security vestibules. We'll enclose the last two breezeways we have open right now. They're at Mount Vernon and at Dare Elementary School. Also, we're looking at replacing the gym floors at Dare Elementary School and Mount Vernon. And then the last thing there is the security vestibules, and that's designing security vestibules at Mount Vernon and at Coventry Elementary School. So both of these now are just for the design. This is not for construction right now. This is, this is the, this phase of these, both of these projects is just for the design, and they're going on, they're on the street right now to be, proposals to be received early next year. And that's my last slide for this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, Mr. Sheehart? Thank you very much, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
We have two comments, two portions of the comments of citizens. The first is public participation at board meetings. Have two people signed up. As I call your name, if you will come and give your name and address, and you have three minutes. The first is Mr. Sam Ury.
Chairman Hayward, members of the school board, Dr. Shandor. My name is Sam Ury, 302 Penworth Cross in Yorktown, Virginia, 23692. The York County School Division has the unique opportunity to provide a real benefit to its employees by implementing a sick bank program. The program would be a significant step in assisting our employees. It's a great time to not only consider, but also implement a sick bank. We look forward to working with Dr. Carroll to improve upon and set the stage for the implementation of a sick bank prior to the approval of the new personnel regulations. We would like to thank you, on a separate topic, we'd like to thank Dr. Shandor, your staff, the school board, for its diligent work and the considerable compassion and community input that you've gotten as it relates to the development of the attendance zones. It's been something that's been noted, your diligence and your work related to that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Merry Christmas. Next is Kathleen Howe.
My name is Kathleen Howe, and I reside at 121 Lance Way, Yorktown, Virginia. I am here this evening to discuss school start times within York County. On Monday, November 26, 2017, a teenager in Virginia Beach was hit at 6:30 a.m. in the Cross Rock while going to school. Fortunately, the teenager is going to be fine, but this could have been a different outcome, or even one of our students here in York County. It is difficult for the drivers to see some of these students in the darkness that early in the morning. On December 9, 2013, Dr. Eric Williams, our superintendent at the time, came up with six options to a more reasonable school start time at no additional cost to the taxpayers in York County. The York County School Board then narrowed the six options down to two options. Presently, the current school schedule has high school students, rather, in session from 7:20 a.m. to 2:05 p.m. Under option one, high school students would be in school from 8:30 a.m. to 3:15 p.m. Middle school currently runs from 8:00 to 2:45 p.m., or 8:05 to 2:50 p.m., depending upon the school. They would be in session from 9:00 a.m., 9:10, rather, a.m., to 3:55 or 9:15 to 4:00 p.m. Elementary school currently runs from 8:45 to 3:21, or 9:00 to 3:36, once again, depending upon the school. With this option, they would attend school from 7:50 a.m. to 2:26 p.m. In option two, which the school board was also considering back in 2013, high school students would be in school from 7:50 a.m. to 2:35 p.m., followed by elementary school at 8:30 a.m. to 3:06 p.m., or 8:45 to 3:21, once again, depending upon the school. And lastly, middle school would start at 9:25 and end at 4:10 p.m. We, the people of York County, have spoken, just like in elections. The majority of York County residents are currently still in favor of changing the school start times here in York County. To date, we are still at 58% in favor of changing the school start times, as opposed to the 42% opposed. If this topic were candidates, and this were an election, the people...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This, the school start times would be implemented, and I look forward to hearing the outcome with Darrell Drogich's report in your January 18th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have next a public hearing on the proposed attendance zone adjustments, and before I open the public hearing, Dr. Shandor, you have a few comments?
I do. Excuse me, I do. Thank you, Ms. Haywood. So, I wanted to share just a few brief remarks related to our proposed attendance zone adjustments. First, Dr. James has worked closely with the Elementary Attendance Zone Balancing Committee, which consisted of 20 parents, five principals, and four SBO staff. The committee recommended no adjustments for Bethel Manor Elementary School, Dare, Mount Vernon, and TAB Elementary. Recommended that Waller Mill and the McGruder Elementary School zones, adjustments are delayed until more is known about other residential developments in that area. Finally, the Attendance Zone Committee has recommended adjustments to the Coventry and Grafton-Bethel Elementary Zones, as well as the Seaford Elementary and Yorktown Elementary Zones. So, next up, after this evening, after this evening's hearing, the board will have another opportunity to discuss this on January 8th in a work session, and then board action opportunity to discuss this on January 8th in a work session, and then board action on proposed changes at the January 22 regular meeting.
Thank you. And with that, I open the public hearing. Anyone, no one has signed up, there's anyone that wants to speak on the attendance zones? Not? I close the public hearing. And moving on, matters by board members, I'm going to start down with Dr. George, as I usually do.
Yeah, just, just a couple of things, really relatively quiet, for me, anyway, it seems like. I will say that we had a joint work session with the Board of Supervisors two weeks ago, and just from a personal perspective, it, it went extremely well. I felt like it was probably the best one that I had, the best feeling that I ever got in leaving that meeting, and I don't know if that's just me or not, but I think the, the cooperation is there, the spirit of trying to do what's right for the kids and the county. I think we've made some strides, and I think we, we owe that to several things, and Dr. Shandor has done a wonderful job engaging with Neil Morgan and, and those folks. So, so I just feel really good about that, I feel like I wanted to, wanted to say that. So, other than that, I hope you were able to go out and enjoy some of the Christmas programs that the schools offered, wonderful, wonderful holiday concerts. And with that, I wish you a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to each and every one of you, and celebrate them in your own way, but make sure you celebrate joy. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to reiterate the two work sessions we had this month, the second one being with the, the Board of Supervisors. I also came away with a great feeling, I thought it was a good meeting, and a lot of, a lot of things were discussed. So, this past month, I did attend a WHRO meeting over in Norfolk, attended the wall decorating judging at the school board office, which was a treat. It was a lot of fun, they, they got into it and did a great job. Tomorrow is Christmas caroling from Dare Elementary School, the students will be there at 2:00 o'clock, I'm looking forward to hearing that. And there's an IB penning tomorrow night at York High School, so I'm looking forward to attending that. But other than that, everybody have a great Christmas, and looking forward to seeing you in the next, next year and the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson.
You know, we, we did have two work sessions, and being the newest board member, as Dr. Shandor and his staff have realized, I have a lot of questions. So, I just want to say thank you for being so responsive in your answers, and so quickly. You know, I, I expect answers, but I don't expect long answers like they give, so it's all, I appreciate the detail. So, thank you all for, for being patient. I had an opportunity last week to spend some time with Dr. Shandor, and visited the Grafton School Complex, we visited both the high school and the middle school. Great things are going on there, we, we visited several classrooms, we got to see an in-classroom play in the drama class, they presented Pandora's Box, which was interesting. And then today, I got to spend some time with Ms. Sasson down at Coventry, sort of a last-minute thing. And I love the elementary school students, because that, that's when they, they still love learning, and they're, they're doing great things, and it's just awesome. So, thank you to Dr. Shandor for allowing me the opportunity to visit the schools and stuff like that, and, and just to reiterate what everyone else has said, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and just be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Metford.
I'll be brief, I'll, Dr. Shandor is getting a lot of thanks this evening. He did shuffle me around the, to schools in my zone last week, and after, you know, retiring from a job where you're in a building almost your entire, you know, week, and really just, I miss that. I don't know how much I missed the classroom, how much I missed the kids and students and staff and just people. I missed the fact that, you know, going to the back door and just saying hi to the custodian or cafeteria staff before walking, you know, into the main part of the buildings. It was just, all those thoughts that started coming back as I visited Seaford Elementary School, Yorktown Elementary School, York Middle, York High. But the wonderful things that are just happening, we went into a leadership class at York High School and got thrown right into a Pictionary-type, I'm not even sure what that was, that I got thrown into, but Dr. Shandor and I found ourselves in a contest, competing against each other, trying to draw on a whiteboard. I don't draw very well, so I don't think I won. I think he won. I didn't win. Yeah, I didn't win. But it was, it was fun to see that leadership class engage in something, and they had just finished a food drive, I believe it was, or something. Stuffed the bus. Stuffed the bus, and, and so they were just having a little bit of downtime, and, but at the same time, having, you know, getting ready for the season and such, so, but I just didn't realize how much I missed the classroom. So, thank you very much for that opportunity, because life's been busy. I do look forward to getting into the buildings and, and doing a little bit more in the visiting as we continue the school year. And with that, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and 2018's around the corner, and buckle your seatbelt, hold on tight, it's coming, so.
Sounds like you want your old job back.
Oh, no. I'm enjoying what I'm doing now, but I do find myself with some flex time, I see Mrs. Bauer back there going, "Yeah, come on in." She's already sent an invite, so, anyway, thank you.
I want to join the rest of you in thanking both Dr. Shandor and Mr. Morgan on the county side for the work session. It was wonderful to have both parties, both departments, departments in both areas working together for their presentations, and it was phenomenal. I sent out a text that night after getting home to both Mr. Morgan and Mrs. Dol to say thank you for a fantastic evening. A lot of good information being presented. Robbie, I'm gonna pick on you, because usually you, you get very seldom this time of year, but I want to close with wishing everybody a wonderfully blessed holiday. When I look at the country, and I look at the fires in California, I look at the flooding in Texas and Florida, I look at the train derailment in Washington State, and just to say how blessed we are here for what we have, and to be thankful for all that we have, and again, wishing everybody a wonderfully blessed holiday season, and see you in 2018. With that, Mr. Metford, you have financial matters.
I do, it looks unusual this evening, because we don't actually have any, anything up on a, on a, on the things we vote on, but we will be voting on the financial matters, but we don't have any significant things that are to speak of this evening. Reference to the operating budget, some notes here, the state revenues are running about $252,000 higher for November 2017 than we were last year, and this is in part mainly because the state share the VRS rate increase and the salary increases of 2% that were given to staff. On the expenditure side, we had some instructional expenditures for about $1 million higher this, this month, November 2017, actually, and that's really the increase in additional positions that were added for FY '18, and the increase in salaries and benefits to go along with that average 2% raise for employees. If you notice, transportation expenditures are about $400,000 higher, November 2017, primarily due to timing of vendor payments. Our food service budget, we always watch that one closely, because it's a self-sustaining budget line item, but state revenues, or the revenues are in about $36,000 less this month, but that's just in timing, where the state matches for the national school lunch program, and there is money's received, so nothing to panic over there, and there's no significant changes to the expenditure side of food service for November. Certificates for approval for claims are, there are some significant things to mention. Virginia power, we always have to pay that bill, or we end up in a bad situation. There were payments to Sedexo totaling $295,588 for October, this was an increase, but the increase was about $70,000 from September. There were payments of approximately $455,000 to various vendors related to renovations to school facilities, this includes YES, Bethel Manor, the renovation projects there in additions, and the roof replacement at Grafton Complex. And then there was a payment to Kingmore Supply totaling $287,252 for three school buses, and then the school board resolution for procurement activities not required this evening, because we don't have anything to, there, so just financial matters as it is, I move for approval of that.
Second, please.
My second.
Any comments, questions? Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mr. Metford and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve financial matters. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Metford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes, thank you. We have now consent calendar, and there are about five items. One is consideration of approval of personal actions. Second is consideration of approval of donations in the amount of $9,121. The next, consideration of approval of proposed changes to the program of studies. Consideration of a motion to authorize the superintendent to execute an agreement to purchase perpetual Citrix Zen desktop licenses with payments over three years. And the last, consideration of approval of minutes from a regular meeting on December the 23rd, a special meeting on November 6, and a regular meeting on November the 20th. Do board members need any item to be removed from the consent calendar? May I have a motion to accept?
Madam Chair, I move, make, move a motion to accept.
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Dr. George to approve the consent calendar. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Metford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes, thank you. Under action items, we have two. Consideration of approval of a resolution, 17-660, a resolution of the County School Board of York County, Virginia, to approve the Division Superintendent's Fiscal Year 2019 Capital Improvement Program. Is there a motion to approve this action?
Move approval.
Second, please.
Second.
Comments, discussion?
I have a comment, Adam.
Yes.
I just want to quickly just acknowledge and appreciate the work that Mr. Shearheart and, and Dr. James do, as they develop all of the projects within the CIP. They do a great job of prioritizing these projects every year. As you know, sometimes projects move up and, up and back on that, so we certainly appreciate all the work that they do, and there's no changes since the last discussion on the CIP.
Sounds good. Thank you, and we do thank them. Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mr. Metford and seconded by Mr. Anderson to approve Resolution 1760. Mr. Metford?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes, thank you. The second is consideration of a motion to request the Board of Supervisors to appropriate to the School Division, the FY '17 operating budget end of fiscal year reversion carryover funds, exclusive of Impact Aid receipts, over the revenue budget lines, items for Impact Aid, in the following manner. $350,000 for technology, $132,602 for textbooks, $100,000 for buses, and $100,000 for certain capital projects. Is there a motion to accept?
Move motion.
Second.
Comments, questions?
I just want to mention, this, this is something that's significant for us as a county, I believe, that where we have the relationship we do with our governing body and the superintendent county administrator, and for years and years to have the dollars reverted back to the School Division to spend in areas where we just don't have the funding and our general fund to do it, it says a lot for our local governing body to have that trust and knowing that these things need to be funded, but how do we do it? This is where we find our ways, so, thank you to them.
Any other comments, questions? Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Dr. George and seconded by Mr. Anderson to approve the motion to request the Board of Supervis, the Board of Supervisors to appropriate to the School Division, the FY '17 operating budget end fiscal year reversion carryover funds. Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Metford?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes, thank you. Under policy for discussion, we do not have any item. We'll move down to first reading. First reading of the quad, quadrennial review of Section G Personnel of the School Division Policy Manual. Any other information, Dr. Shandor, you want to add to this?
There have been no changes since...
Last time.
Last meeting.
And we'll move down, we have a second reading and needing action on the second reading of the quadrennial review of Section I, Instruction of the School Board Policy Manual. May I have a motion to accept?
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments or questions here? Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mr. Metford and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the policy of Section I. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Metford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes, thank you. And Dr. Shandor, your report?
Thank you, Ms. Hayward. Board members, I just have two quick items that I wanted to share this evening. One, many of you mentioned the joint meeting that we had with the supervisors, I just want to publicly thank Mr. Morgan and, and his staff for all of the work that they've, that they did on that meeting. It was 175 slides, a lot of, a lot of important information to provide updates on priorities for the School Division, as well as the county, so really want to thank his team for all their work and collaborating with us. But I also want to thank my team, our cabinet folks who are sitting over here, Dr. Carroll, Mr. Bowen, Dr. Guy, and Dr. James, they put a lot of work and time into that, those presentations to provide the updates to you all, so really proud of that work. Again, I think we're really fortunate to have two governing bodies that communicate well together, and, and staff that collaborate together. Secondly, had an opportunity this past week to, to go present several Apple Awards, which is a recognition program that we have in, in the School Division. It's the highlight of my day, I'll tell you, going out and surprising these folks with these awards, so it's always a great opportunity to acknowledge the dedication of excellence from our, our staff members. And finally, just like everyone else, I want to wish everyone, all the student staff and teachers and parents, a wonderful time as you celebrate over the break with family and friends, and see you in '18. Thanks.
Anything else before we, we're in need of a close, a motion to go into closed session? Someone will take us in?
Madam Chair, I move the New York County School Board convene a closed session pursuant to Virginia Freedom Information Act for the following purposes, to consult with legal counsel under Virginia Code 2.23711A7, in particular, actual probable litigation involving the School Division.
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ford.
A motion is made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Metford for the New York County School Board to convene in closed session. Mr. Metford?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayward?
Yes, the board's in closed session.